Joining us on piano tonight, leading us is Ms. Jane Howard. Please rise.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last beating? Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner Ever yet wave For the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you, Mrs. Howard. We made pretty good progress so far, although we did get stuck on leaf blowers. Hopefully, we can dispose of that pretty quickly tonight, because then we're going to take up the budgets, which is actually something we should spend time on. We've had about 82 percent attendance, according to Mr. Harrington, who sent around a little letter. That's pretty good for us. Couple precincts do have -- Precinct four in particular is missing a few people who haven't showed up as of yet. I'm not sure why they would have gotten themselves elected to not come at all. Kind of baffles me. I was reminded that we all do have a conflict of interests statute and rule, so if you have any financial interest, or if your family has any financial interest in any of the articles we are discussing, and you get up to speak about that article, you ought to just tell us right up front what that interest is, but it doesn't prevent you from speaking. All right, any town meeting members who have not yet been sworn in? Hope it's not one of those fours. I haven't -- no, seeing none. Mr. Greeley.
I am the moderator of the town meeting. We need to set forth a warrant for the annual town meeting. It's not disposed of at this session. When the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 16, 2012, at 8:00 p.m.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, passes. Any announcements or resolutions? Mr. Smith.
Two subjects I'd like to discuss. This year is the 100th anniversary --
No name in precinct?
Richard Smith, precinct 17. This year is the 100th anniversary of the War of 1812. People don't know much about it, but one of the main conflicts in the War of 1812 was the Battle of Fort McHenry. It was outside of Baltimore. The last night of the battle, there was an awful lot of fireworks going on, and there was a ship nearby with a passenger named Francis Scott Key. He was so inspired by the War of -- the Battle of Fort McHenry, he wrote words which became our national anthem in 1931. Ours is the only national anthem which has, as its lyrics, a battle. So next time you hear "The Star-Spangled Banner," you might think of the Battle of Fort McHenry that was taking place when these words were written. A second item. On your seats tonight, you have a flyer about Article 73. It's unlikely we'll get to Article 73 tonight, so tomorrow night, at the First Parish Church, a couple doors down in the vestry, there's going to be an information meeting about Citizens United, what it is, what the results of it are, and so forth. We've got the Executive Director of Common Cause, Pam Wilmich. She'll be one of the speakers. Our own Representative Sean Garbely, who's a strong voice in our legislature on this issue, and also Senator Will Brownsberger, who has a very different take on Citizens United. I think it would be a good idea if you could attend that, find out what it's all about. This is open to the public, so there may be other people, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other announcements or resolutions? Seeing none. Have any reports of committees? No committee reports. Okay. That will move us right back to Article 25, leaf blowers. So I'm going to summarize, so we remember where we were, and maybe we can forestall some extra debate. The pro-leaf blower -- the pro-ban people tell us they're noisy, they disturb the peace, they blow all sorts of nasty stuff around, that they are unnecessary, and we can use rakes. We should leave the leaf blowers and let us use them. People say that they are -- they -- if you use a leaf blower, you actually are on there for less time. You have a landscaper or yard person do your lawn. It takes them less time. They're going to charge you less money. If they don't have a leaf blower, you're going to pay more money for it. And we have noise ordinances that can amply take care of the leaf blower with the decibels and the times, and they also feel that it's something that we shouldn't be wasting our -- spending our time on, and we should be moving on to other things. So if that's being said, the next person would be a Mr. Redosha, who has a sub -- amendment Article 4. Mr. Redosha. All right, one second, Mr. Redosha. I'm going to continue with the list we had the other day, so if you're on the list, you don't have to raise your hands. Okay, Mr. Redosha, go ahead.
Paul Redosha, precinct 11. I left a copy of this out, and I was suggesting the change, too, and that is basically to prohibit the use between May 15 and October 15. Now, this is an attempt to compromise between those that are adamantly opposed and those that are adamantly against, and so forth, and somewhere in between. I've talked to many people in the recent days, particularly over the weekend, Mother's Day, and at the supermarket, and everybody else. There are all kinds of opinions on this. Everybody has a position and a stance on it. And I come to the conclusion that it's not really about noise or petroleum pollutants. Leaf blowers are not necessarily any louder or discharge any more pollutants than weed whackers, chainsaws, lawn mowers, or a neighborhood teenager with a boombox, or a garage band. From my discussions with the anti-leaf people, it's about the invasion of dirt and debris on their property onto and into their houses and automobiles, and also having to drive through clouds of dust occasionally down some of the side streets. And the other part of it is that those that are for the leaf blowers tend not to be home when the landscapers come to do it. Those on the other side of it are home and have to endure the harassment and invasion that takes place. And again, I'm saying it's not about anything other than the dirt and debris that comes onto your property. Okay? And a leaf blower, by definition, is about blowing leaves and gathering leaves, but it has become a reverse vacuum cleaner used to blow the dirt and debris around. I prefer a noisy vacuum cleaner. I have no problem allowing their use in the early spring and late fall. That's why I put those dates on, because in between, there aren't many leaves that are falling down between. Now, this is mid-May, and I think you've seen most of them come down at this point. There's not much more to go until October. And in that time period, in the fall and the late fall and the spring, people aren't outside with their activities and with their windows open. They close them down at that point, so they're inside. It's no problem. Make all the noise and blow all the stuff you want around. I don't care. So there are a lot of leaves -- okay, that fall between May and mid-October, and I see no reason to blow the grass after it has been cut and the clippings removed. My barber stopped blowing my hair to shake the stuff out of it at the end, because I think it was polluting his shop, so they no longer do it, so I'd like to see that come to a stop when my windows are open, okay? And finally, you know, 10 minutes with a broom or a rake is very therapeutic for the mind, soul, and the body, so for what it's worth, I hope you kind of consider this and see where it goes. Thank you.
Did we get a second on Mr. -- okay, thank you. Mr. Romano?
Maria Romano, precinct seven. Article 25 and the substitute motions are unfortunately extremism at its worst. Fact: Board of Selectmen voted no action to this article this year. A fact: Town meeting in 2008 voted no action on the same article that was presented then. I ask that once again this legislative body votes no to the substitute motions and no to Article 25. Last Wednesday, May 9, we started discussing the article. Three fairly intelligent people got up before us, one being Carol Bann, the author of both the substitute motion and Article 25. To say quite simply they tried to scare the living daylights out of all of us is an understatement. Pesticides, lead paint, dog poop, all going into the air and into your homes. If we listened to all they said, then the town of Arlington truly needs to close down, get a hold of Erin Brockovich, the crusader against pollutants, so our contaminated, pesticide-infested, poop-laden town can get cleaned up. I think it's a little overkill. Ms. Bann, you have avenues to go to. The EPA, the Health Department, town officials, all supporting noise containment laws. If someone is not following any law, then please pursue action through those avenues. See, I believe that you don't like or want any noise to interrupt your day, and more importantly, you just don't like landscapers who use leaf blowers in the spring, summer, or fall. Let's get some of the facts out there for all of us. One: pesticides were banned in 1978, 30 years ago. Two: landscapers mow your lawn, then 90 percent of that stuff you're scaring people about is actually sucked up by the lawn mower that's bagged and taken away. So actually, if you want to look at it, the landscapers are helping you clean up the lawn safely. Three: after mowing, landscapers do trim. They blow the clippings of grass off driveways and walkways. If your street in front of your home has a buildup of sand, dirt, cigarette butts, lottery tickets, whatever, then you, as a property owner, should take the initiative to clean it. Ask your neighbor nicely, always nicely, to also keep up with the light sweeping, so when their landscaper does their job, he is truly blowing for under five minutes the clippings of the grass and light clean soil from the property to leave the walkways and driveway neat and clean. There are solutions, Carol. Any property owner can also ask their landscaper to sweep and pick up debris in the street if the homeowner isn't capable of doing it for age or disability. And they can do that before mowing the lawn. There will be an additional charge, but it is an option. Then let the mowing ritual begin, which, by the way, from start to finish lasts no more than 15 minutes. See, in my neighborhood, we like to help the town workers by sweeping the street in front of our homes. This common sense procedure will also be used when fallen leaves have to be cleaned away. Fallen leaves are just sitting on lawns and in shrub beds, so the fear of moving those dangerous pesticides, dog poop, and lead paint chips into homes and on window sills is nil to nothing. In fact, many landscapers do rake around the beds first and then blow. It's time efficient. Two people are generally doing the leaf removal. One rakes, the other blows, goes into a drop cloth, and then it's put in their truck. It's called efficiency. Fact four: lead paint issue. Any home having work done outside or inside must hire a certified lead abatement contractor to do the work. The EPA requires containment at all times. So if you see work being done and paint chips and/or dust not contained or removed every workday, go to the neighbor, first try to nicely discuss the issue, and if that doesn't work, then go to the proper authorities and ask that containment be done. Many landscapers I know will not mow a lawn that has debris of dust or chips of paint left by contractors. Five: gas leaf blowers set at a normal decibel noise level should continue. Now, I'd like to ask a question. I don't know who has the answer. What is the acceptable level, the acceptable decibel level for lawn leaf blowers in this town? Eighty-five. Okay, well, that was misrepresented the other night. Then, that is what the landscapers need to follow by law. Simple, and I think most of them are. If they're not, then it has to be brought to his -- their attention and taken care of. We have a noise ordinance in place. I have another question. What is the Health Commission's opinion on this issue, as presented by Carol Bann?
Do you have an opinion?
The Board of Health did not vote or did not take this up in a public hearing, because it was a no-action vote by the selectmen, as well as the -- basically the selectmen. I will say, though, however, if the Board of Health felt that leaf blowers were a public health threat, they obviously would take this up and follow this issue and enact regulations through the board.
Thank you very much. Six: monetary hardships will exist. Businesses will lose customers, because labor rates by landscapers will definitely go up, and families who truly can't mow their lawn for a variety of reasons will have to pay more for their mowing, and that's a hardship in this economic time that we're facing. Please, don't impose your choices on others. It is your choice to do things and how you live. It is not your right to tell others how to live and what choices to make. These are all very clear choices within the law. You electric mow your lawn. Many use gas mowers. Some hand trim. Many use electric or gas trimmers. Some love to shovel. Some use snow blowers. All choices within the law, done at proper times set by state and town ordinances. This is America, land of the free and home of the gas blowers, snow blowers, and construction compressors. See, the goal is really not to irritate you, but to make the job get done quicker and cost-effective. This is a slippery slope we have here. Are you going to ban roofers and carpenters from using compressors to nail their roof or frame out that addition? I would not like to be next door to your home and have my construction crew there from 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, so your neighbor gets that wonderful kitchen, that bath or addition they dreamed of. You'd probably put a stop to it, and it's against the law for you to put a stop to it, because I'm within legal right to do so. See, Arlington is a wonderful community, densely populated, houses close to each other. That is the reality of our town. You can't tell people how to live, and I mean this with all my heart. If you're not happy here, perhaps you need to move to the country, where it is quiet. It's an option you have. This discussion is very serious. Our job here tonight is to legislate for the majority. No matter what article or change is presented, it should never be passed because of a special interest group. There is no place for that in these chambers. Our special interest needs always to be what is best for the majority of the residents and the business owners. I am very proud of the work we have done this year at Town Meeting. We've worked very, very hard, and we have a job to do now. Let's continue the common sense choices and the decisions we're making. Again, I ask that we vote no on Article 25 and on both substitute motions. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Mr. Dunn, your hand raised. This is a selectman the other day. Did you wish to still speak? Pass. Mr. Harris, EJ. Where'd he go? Oh, you know who's not here? Mr. Trembley? Oh, Ed's not here either. Mr. Kaplan? Yep, Bill. Take the -- yeah, take the microphone.
Oh, Bill Kaplan, precinct six, motion to terminate debate.
On all matters before the article?
On all matters before the article.
Okay. We have a motion to terminate debate on all matters before the article. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
My opinion, it is a two-thirds vote, and debate is terminated. First, we'll take Mr. Redosha's, because his is adding on something to Ms. Bann's, and then we'll see if it substitutes for the vote of no action of the selectmen. So first, we're voting on Mr. Redosha's, which -- yes, sir. I have Mr. Redosha's substitute motion and Ms. Bann's substitute motion. Throw it away. Throw it away. There's no name on it, toss it. Who's the name? Yeah, the only substitutes I have, Ms. McCory, are Carol Bann's, where she has penciled in the word "gas-powered leaf blow" -- the use of all gas-powered leaf blowers, and Mr. Redosha's, where he's taken hers and added banning them between May 15 and October 15.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Good, do you have either of those electronically?
Just to clarify, Mr. Moderator, I have assigned amendments, but a signature is unlegible to me, so perhaps...
Well, what is it? It's -- those are the only two I have here. There's no name up the top where it says I?
It would be helpful if you could display it.
Let me see it. What he was looking at was Ms. Bann's one she didn't submit. What's your point of order? It's been...
What's before us is what's been spoken to at the podium. If it's on the seat, it's not relevant unless it's introduced, right?
Correct. Yes. Thank you. That's what I'm saying. The only two I have are the two that we've been speaking about, Mr. Redosha's with the prohibition of time and Ms. Bann's without the prohibition of time. All right, all in favor of Mr. Redosha's substitute motion? Please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
My opinion, that is a negative vote. Okay. All in favor of Mr. Redosha's substitute motion, please rise. Same tellers. Sir. Mr. Wagner, you have been dubbed as teller for that section. Do you swear you're going to do the right thing? That section right there. Yep. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Dunn?
Four.
Four up front. Mr. Schlickman?
Twelve.
Twelve. Mr. O'Connor?
Twenty-seven.
How many?
Twenty-seven.
Two, seven. Mr. Wagner?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. All right, all opposed to Mr. Redosha's motion, please rise. Excuse me. Eight up front. Mr. Schlickman?
Nineteen.
Nineteen on the right.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Mr. Horowitz?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Eighty-one. I was wrong. It isn't the affirmative. Eighty-four to eighty-one. All right. So it is an affirmative vote on Mr. Redosha's. So now we're going to have -- vote on Ms. Bann's as substituted by Mr. Redosha. Actually, we're going to vote on -- how are we going to do this? That's interesting. What's that? Yeah, I think it is moot. Yeah. Now, we're just going to vote as substituted. Huh? I guess we did, but it's moot, because they want to have the time limits. No, wait. I get to think about this. Sorry. Sorry. All right, we're going to substitute Mr. -- you can either vote -- Yes, expletive deleted. Mr. Hayner, what purpose do you raise your hand? Excuse me? It's an expletive deleted. I'm looking at it, and I believe that Ms. Bann's motion, substitute motion, is moot, as we voted to ban leaf blowers between May 15 and May 8/15, October 8/15. We're substituting, but now we're going to take the vote whether or not we want to substitute it for no action.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Hayner from precinct two. We had a substitute motion. Substitute means to --
We have two.
By definition, means to replace in its entirety.
We have two substitutes. They're both substitutes. If you look at your piece of paper, they're both substitutes. I know.
Mr. Moderator?
If you don't like the outcome, vote reconsideration.
Or challenge to the chair. Thank you.
No, you can't challenge the chair. You cannot challenge the chair by the mass law. You have no right to challenge the chair. All right, so we're going to vote Mr. Redosha's. As substituted for the Board of Selectmen, all in favor of Mr. Redosha's substitute, please. We're going to vote to substitute it right now. Then we're going to vote. No, no, we voted to substitute. Now, we're going to vote on it. I mean, you guys are getting me confused. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jamison, precinct 12. I distinctly got the impression that we were going to vote one first and one the second, and that the first one was going to be one --
And what if they both win?
Well...
What if they both win?
Well, if we -- is it possible to approve one?
And not the other?
Well, I mean, you're doing -- my understanding is what you are doing is there's a choice here still before the floor.
Yes.
...of a five-month period of banning or a 12-month period of banning or, of course, no action.
Right.
And if I understand correctly, the course that you are taking is a priori removing the 12-month option from the floor.
You just voted to do that.
That wasn't the understanding of the vote as presented to the floor.
All right, fine. All in favor of Miss Banz's substitute motion, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed?
No!
My opinion, it is defeated. Now, we're going to vote on the Board of Selectmen as substituted by Mr. Redosha. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
My opinion, that's defeated. We're voting whether or not we want to substitute. All in favor of banning leaf blowers? It's as substituted. This is the final vote. We are voting on the final vote. We just voted down Miss Banz's 12-month ban. We are now voting whether or not we are going to go with the partial year ban as the bylaw for the Town of Arlington. We're no more substituting. This is as substituted. This is our final vote. If you vote this, you can't use them any time between May 15th and October 15th. Is that clear? Yes, good. All in favor of the partial ban, please rise. Up front?
Three.
Three.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Mr. O'Connor?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Mr. Wagner?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Mr. Horowitz?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. All in favor of no ban, please... All opposed, please rise. Not going to try and say anything. They got me confused. Ninety-five, passed. Up front?
Nine.
Nine.
Seventeen.
Seventeen from Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Schlickman?
Twenty.
Twenty. Mr. Wagner?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Mr. Horowitz?
Seventeen.
Eighty-five. The vote is in the affirmative, ninety-five to eighty-five.
I would like to move to take the budgets. Article forty...
We have a motion to take the budgets.
Article forty, off the table.
Off the table. Second?
Yes.
All in favor of taking Article forty off the table, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? Okay, Article forty is before us.
Okay, so everybody should have their nice, bright, green books out. I know, it sounds like bingo, but B5. Okay, on B5, Budget 14, Planning and Community Development. You see a footnote down the bottom, "Position Previously Funded Through." I just want you to change "previously" to "partially." So it reads, "Position Partially Funded Through Community Development Block Grant." And right up above, you see a little asterisk next to "planner." Just put a little asterisk next to "Director of Housing and Disability." Right, in addition. So you'd be two asterisks, Director of Housing and Community Development, Housing and Disability, and next to planner, and the footnote reads, "Position Partially Funded Through Community Development Block Grant Funds." And then, if you could go to page B10, Inspections, Budget 19. There's a footnote there that reads, "Include Sims Urban Renewal Fund Offset." Just delete it. It's funny how many people can read this, and footnotes sort of envelop the life of their own, and they just sort of continue from year to year, and nobody notices they shouldn't be there anymore. Well, we finally noticed this one. So just take "Include Sims Urban Renewal Fund Offset" and just delete it. It was obsolete. It should have been deleted several years ago. On the budgets, Finance Committee stands ready to answer any questions you might have. Go on with the manager or department heads. So thank you for your consideration.
All right, hopefully this goes smoother. What we're going to do, as we've done in years past, I'm going to go through the budgets. If you wish to discuss it, yell "hold," then we'll go back and discuss those budgets which have been held. This is School Department. Wish to give you a presentation now or when your budget comes up? I do wish you could make this a little bigger, Mr. Tosti. Finance Committee. Board of Selectmen. Town Manager. Information Technologies. Comp Patrol. Board of Assessors. Town Clerk. Board of Registars. Parking. Planning and Community Development. Redevelopment Board. Zone... Zoning Board of Appeals. Inspections. Education. Retirement. I missed one? Where... Oh, I see. This is so tiny. Health and Human Services. Insurances. We did Retirement. We did Retirement. Does anyone want to hold Retirement? We just did it. Okay. Insurance. Water and Sewer. Veterans Memorial Rink. Council on Aging Transportation. Youth Services Division. And that's it. Okay. So the first budget that was put on hold is 14, Planning and Community Development. Who wished to speak to that?
Mark Keplin, Precinct 7. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't know if it's the right department, but I'm trying to figure out where the funds for Mass Ave easements are coming from. Planning, legal, highway. Can anybody tell me?
Mr. Chapdeline? Do you know where the money for the Mass Ave easements is coming from? Which budget?
Chapdeline, Town Manager. In the operating budget, as they're before you, there's no funds for the easements for Mass Ave. Those have been budgeted within the Town's Chapter 90 allocation, so they're not found in any of the Town's FY13 or FY12 operating budgets.
Okay. So I looked up on the state website, and I see that for fiscal year 2012, the Town's distribution allotment for Chapter 90 has gone up from $609,498 dollars up to $783,973. And in the capital budget, it lists Chapter 90 income as $500,000 a year, and it's projected out through 2017 as still only $500,000 a year. And additionally, residents are kicking in $350,000...
Wait, wait. How does that relate to this budget?
Essentially, residents are paying more, an extra $800,000 for roadwork, because you're taking the money for easements out of Chapter 90 funds and not giving Town Meeting any discretion over how those funds are used. Instead, we have to kick in more money, an additional $400,000 after the override. So you're essentially usurping the authority of Town Meeting to control finances by calling it Chapter 90 expense and not as a general road expense. So that's my issue. So both the capital budget underestimates the amount of money coming from Chapter 90. It's incorrect.
They can't hear you. But should that not have been raised under the capital budgets or under the budget for Public Works?
Well, there's very little description of any of these line items, and that's why I started out asking you, okay, what budget is the easements come under?
Do you have a specific question you want to address? Or are you just making a statement?
I'm making a statement that the capital budgeting and projections are off by almost $300,000 a year, and two, the authority of the Town Meeting to control spending has been usurped by the administration by claiming it's state funding for this but town funding for that. So that's my statement.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to Planning and Community Development budget? Seeing none, okay, that ends that budget. Number 15, someone put a hold on Redevelopment Board. Who wished to speak to that? Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a question. One of the line items refers to Gibbs expenses. Did we have a resolution whether that's under the ARB or the Town Manager's purview for managing the Gibbs? I know we had a handout on our sheet from Mr. Chapdeline, but is that a done issue? Does it matter how we vote this, the outcome, should it be under the ARB or the Town Manager's purview, how we vote this?
Mr. Chapdeline, can you answer this question?
Chapdeline, Article 27 is still postponed. It hasn't been acted upon yet, but the appropriation of these funds would not be impacted. These funds would be expensed whether through the ARB or the Town Manager when that is resolved. So there's no...
So if we vote them in...
This appropriation, it's spent on the Gibbs regardless of which body is managing
it. So if it ends up being the Town Manager who's in control, which is what your handout posits, we're appropriating funds into the ARB. How do you get the funds to put into the Gibbs?
It's practically managed by the Planning and Community Development Office.
So that's under your purview?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this budget? Redevelopment Board? Seeing none. Next budget that was put on hold, Public Works. Who wants to speak to Public Works? Mr. Tremblay?
Ed Tremblay, Precinct 19. Mr. Moderator, I have my annual question. How much salt did we use?
Mike Radamacher, Public Works Director. This past year, we purchased 4,193 tons of salt at a cost of $269,877.
Well, that's less than the 11,000 tons we used a few years ago, but still kind of a lot, given how much snow we...
There were not a lot of snowstorms. There were a lot of storms that required us to treat the roads, and we were able to fight the storms that we did get with the salting trucks rather than calling contractors.
And do you think that, for instance, I saw in the capital budget, and I don't know, maybe it's in here somewhere too, you got some new sander bodies coming? Do you think if we got metering devices on the sander bodies, we might be able to cut that down some?
I do. Metering devices, for folks who don't know, is equipment which you can install on a sanding truck that will control the amount of salt distributed and can be programmed to put down a certain amount of salt per lane mile, and it's something that we're investigating to better control the application of salt.
So it would pay... The device would pay for itself?
It's quite possible that the savings in salt would pay for the device, yes.
And you'll look into that?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Laredi, Precinct 7. Just to follow up on that last question, I heard Mr. Radamacher say how much we spent on salt this year. Is that the same amount? Was all the salt used that we bought?
Mr. Radamacher?
We have two salt sheds, a large and a small. We have a small salt shed which does have material in it.
Do you have a sense of what fraction of the purchase remains?
It's about... I would say it's about one-tenth of the amount.
Thank you. I guess my other question, Mr. Moderator, is more generally, how much did the Town spend on snow and ice removal this year, and how much was budgeted?
Mike Radamacher, Public Works. Our budget this year was $577,779, and we spent $507,000.
I'm sorry, how much?
$507,000.
Wow. I'm really surprised. A few years ago, we were budgeting, I think, on the order of $300,000 to $400,000. This past winter was extremely mild, and we're using up almost the entire snow and ice budget for... It's a modest winter.
The years where we budgeted $300,000 or so thousand, we typically went over by a million dollars or so.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. To follow up quickly on the snow and ice, if you turn to the next page in from the very back of your FinCom, and you look over to the lower right, which is a sort of a total summation of the expenditures for the year, you'll notice there's a zero there next to snow and ice deficit. I've been in Town Meeting now 12 years. That's usually 600... That's usually six hundred to one point two million dollars. So we, oh, Mother Nature, rousing applause. Mr. Tosky, I know is very happy when it doesn't snow. So my questions. I totaled one point two-five million dollars in the roadway reconstructions from mixture of the stated amount in the capital plan, the extra four hundred thousand we voted as part of the override, and a standard amount, that I forget what the number was, but that added up to one point two-five million. I was interested in the difference that the gentleman spoke to a previous budget regarding the two hundred thousand or so that he saw in Chapter Ninety. Is the difference there, perhaps, Mr. Radamacher, through the moderator, moderator could help us, is that difference related to the fact that the increases happened recently and Chapter Ninety funds are reimbursement in nature?
Mr. Radamacher? Can you answer that question?
Yes, Mike Radamacher, Public Works. We do not know the amount of Chapter Ninety when the budget comes out, so five hundred thousand is put in as a placeholder for the use of those expenditures.
So do we need to reconsider that budget and add the rest of it in?
It was not my impression that we had to.
Mr. Chapdeline?
Because the more is the better if the state's giving it to us.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Chapter Ninety is spent not subject to appropriation, and as Mr. Radamacher just stated, historically, the Chapter Ninety amount had been approximately five hundred thousand, and it had been reported in the capital budget. Starting last year, the legislature increased that amount. This year, they've planned to increase that amount, but that bill's yet to be released by the legislature. So we have a projected amount, but still don't actually know what the Chapter Ninety amount for the next FY thirteen would be.
So in that particular item, when we vote the capital plan, that includes that, that's our vote is technically, that line item is immaterial, and it could be increased, and the total could be increased?
In terms, Chapter Ninety can be spent to the amount that is issued to each town, so correct?
My question is, we vote to expend a certain amount of funds from grants and other sources, and there's a number to that, and it's got a bottom line number, and this would increase it by several hundred thousand. Are we doing something wrong by not voting the full amount?
No, I believe the language of the vote allows the Town Manager to accept other grants and expend them as they become available.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christian Klein, Precinct Ten. Just a quick question. Section G, under Street Lighting, Traffic Signals, and Fire Alarms, where there is a reduction of twenty-plus percent in both maintenance and electricity, I'm just curious how much of that is due to the town's adoption of LED lighting?
Mr. Chapdeline's going to tell us?
The reductions you see there are almost entirely due to the LED lighting, both maintenance and electricity. The maintenance is due to the fact that the one-third of the town that's been changed over has a seven-year warranty, so if there's any failure of the light, that warranty covers both install as well as the fixture itself, so maintenance costs will be reduced. And the electricity usage of the LED fixtures is about a fifty percent reduction from the high-pressure sodium lights that were installed. So given the lights that have been installed and the lights that will be installed going forward through the funding that was approved in the capital budget, that's an estimated reduction in electricity usage for the next year.
Tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct Nine. Motion to terminate debate under this budget item.
All in favor? Oh, all in favor of terminating debate on this budget, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
Okay, it's not a two-thirds vote. Mr. Warden?
John Warden, Precinct Eight. Since we're speaking about lights, a question I've often raised in this hall, particularly when I was, had the honor to sit where you sit, Mr. Moderator, I often wonder if we're saving some electricity by not turning them all on. There's one, two, three, four of these bulbs or these light fixtures don't have bulbs in them apparently, or have burned-out bulbs.
What do you think? Can we save some electricity in the hall?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. I guess the best answer I can give is I know we're currently looking at having some electrical work done in terms of all the light fixtures here, so I can't say for certain, but I think some of these fixtures might have an electrical problem, and we are working to remedy that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this budget? Budget seventeen. Seeing none. Next budget to put on hold was Community Safety. Who wish to speak to that? Mr. Weddle. Okay, Mr. Chap.
Bruce Weddle, Precinct Twelve. I'm looking at the Green Book, Appendix B, page B nine, the Sub-B Police Services Detail of Personnel Services for the Police Department. In addition to the ranking officers and patrolmen, there are a number of part-time positions, parking control officers, three part-time, and detention attendant. And in my particular interest here is the animal control officer. Mr. Moderator, I think my question is probably appropriately directed to Chief Ryan. I've lived in Arlington for forty-one years, been a Town Meeting member off and on for almost that period of time, and I have a somewhat ill-kept garage archive of Finance Committee reports from various years when I was a Town Meeting member. And each year, of course, the Police Department budget has historically called for a full-time dog officer, more recently called Animal Control Officer. And my search of the garage archive showed that in nineteen seventy and seventy-one, in addition to the full-time dog officer, at that point, there was one part-time Animal Control Officer. Nineteen seventy-six and seventy-seven, in addition to the full-time officer, three part-time Animal Control Officers. Nineteen eighty-five and eighty-six, one part-time Animal Control Officer. Nineteen eighty-seven and eighty-eight, two part-time. Nineteen eighty-nine, ninety, nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three, one part-time. It's not scientific, but that's what I found in a quick look. Town Meeting has had off-leash dog issues before it for at least the past four years, with organized group proponents regularly asserting a need. Last year, Town Meeting increased fines for violations of the leash laws to amounts ranging between seventy-five dollars for a first offense to two hundred dollars for fourth and subsequent offenses, with strong support from the Selectmen and the Police Chief. You may recall that, those of you who have been here the past four years, that leaders of the organized dog group opposed the article to raise these fines, whereas in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, and an abortive proposal this year, there were proposals brought forward to increase the opportunity for off-leash dog activity. In two thousand and nine, this was the subject of an organized so-called pilot program, which narrowly failed. And the others have been brought forward by ten voter articles. My question for the chief in view of ongoing problems in certain parks, particularly on weekends, when the full-time officer is typically not on duty, my question, Chief Ryan, is is there a need for the restoration of at least one part-time Animal Control Officer to take care of some of these problems?
Chief Ryan? What's your opinion on that?
However, we're committed to building a budget that meets the policy of our Honorable Board of Selectmen at achieving a budget that's no more than three and a half percent increase over the five, six-year fiscal plan. And when building a budget, you have to set priorities. And adding a part-time Animal Control Officer is, while it would be great to have, it's not a high priority, and we've been able to augment non-traditional enforcement hours with overtime. But we are committed to supporting the Honorable Board of Selectmen in their five-year financial plan.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I guess a brief follow-up. In view of that, I suppose I'd be interested in whether the manager, Mr. Chapdeline, sees an opportunity to work with the Board of Selectmen to help resolve some aspects of this problem in the coming year with an eye toward next year's budget.
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. I think Chief Ryan stated it very well in regards to the three and a half percent spending caps that the budgets are put together based upon the long-term financial plan of the town. However, every year when we put together the budgets, we do look at what priorities are for that year, what certain service needs or levels might be. So I'm certainly willing to give it further consideration as budgets are planned in future years, but given other priorities within Community Safety and within other departments, I certainly couldn't commit to increasing funding levels for that service.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you both.
Thank you. Mr. Chappett?
Roland Chappett. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roland Chappett, Precinct Twelve. I have a question on page B nine, the next to the last line on that page called Accreditation Stipend. I guess my question probably should go to the Police Chief, because I noticed that only in the last couple of years has this expenditure shown up. I'm assuming that this was what we used to call the Quinn Bill? And perhaps there's some explanation, but it doesn't look like there was any money spent, and all of a sudden, we have spent a certain money. I have nothing against the program, by the way. I'm just curious about how it was accounted for that way.
Mr. Ryan, what's that?
No, that, I'm proud to tell you that for the first time about four years ago, the Arlington Police Department became accredited pursuant to the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Program. And as part of that project, a lot of additional duties were placed on ranking officers to achieve and maintain police accreditation. And that was a very small stipend negotiated to each officer who works on that project. It has nothing to do with the Quinn Bill.
So we don't really participate anymore in the Quinn Bill activity, or what?
We do, and that's been collectively bargained with both bargaining units. We do participate in the Quinn Bill.
We do, okay, great. Thank you.
And I think it's a good program.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Ms. LaCorte?
Annie LaCorte, Precinct Fifteen. Returning to an old tradition, I'd like to speak to both of the chiefs through the moderator about the overtime budgets in their departments.
What specific question do you have?
The specific question I have is that I see that recently, the police overtime budget, for example, has taken a fairly large jump, okay, but that we have a drop in the number of patrol officers listed here, and although I can see that we've done some hiring in the last few years, I'm wondering whether we are hiring any more patrolmen, and this overtime budget is temporary, or is this part of your management strategy? I know sometimes we do overtime rather than add personnel for the obvious reasons.
Chief Ryan?
Final question would be, can you tell me the average numbers of overtime that our offices are working?
We've seen an increase in that line item, because historically, the Police Department spends about ten percent of its appropriation on overtime in order to satisfy contractual obligations. We've never been funded with ten percent in that line item. So in order to bring in a balanced budget, we've had to carry vacancies to supplement the overtime expenses, therefore, not making Mr. Tosky angry at us at the end of the fiscal year, we're able to come in balanced. We worked with Mr. Sullivan and more recently, Mr. Chapdeline, to more realistically fund that line item so that we can fill all of our vacancies and provide the necessary and appropriate police services, so.
Okay. And the implication for the number of hours of overtime our offices are working?
I don't have that figure. Clearly, when we have staffing challenges, they work more overtime. It's simple math, and that ebbs and flows with, you know, FMLA cases or officers who were injured in line of duty and vacations, and there's a whole host of variables, and it's a real moving target, but under ideal circumstances, they're not overwhelmed with overtime.
Okay. That's really what I'm getting at, obviously, you know, that I would be concerned about us budgeting for overwork rather than taking the steps we need to, to make sure everybody's schedule's balanced and we avoid injuries.
Right. Except for situations outside of our control, that's not the case.
Okay. So my questions to Chief Jefferson would be similar?
Chief Jefferson, do you remember the questions?
Bob Jefferson, Fire Chief. As a previous chief got up here one night and said ditto, I hate to, as Chief Maymore said, but no, basically what Chief Ryan said is very similar to us. Hour overtime spread out over the course of the year, much heavier in the summertime during vacation periods. We're running, you know, again, about a hundred thousand dollars over our overtime budget this year, but we've had almost nine vacancies for most of those fiscal years.
Okay.
We did just hire five recruits this spring, and we're looking at hiring some more in the fall, so our people are not taxed. We don't have a lot of overtime. There may be an overtime shift or two a day, and then other days, there's nothing. And with fifty firefighters, you spread that out. Some are taking, you know, one a week, some are taking one a year. So there's no tax in there.
Okay. And you think the hiring will smooth this out, and that hiring is covered in this budget? The filling of those vacancies?
Whatever is in our budget, we're looking to fill those vacancies that we have. We anticipate some more retirements, and it's a, as Chief Ryan explained in the past, you know, once you get into that process, it's almost a year for a hiring process. So once you have the vacancy, and then you start to call for lists, and go to interviews, and physical agility tests, and physicals, and psychologics, and all that, and then get into an academy, you know, you're looking a year further on the street. So we're moving along in a process of putting a few on at a time, and hopefully to fill those vacancies. I anticipate a reduced overtime this summer from what we had last summer, because we will have more bodies in the station.
Okay. One of the great pleasures of being on the Board of Selectmen was being introduced to the new recruits as they came on staff, so I'm sure the Board's looking forward to meeting your new officers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. While not speaking for an increase in Animal Control Officer hours, I would note that we have many animals in this town beyond dogs. On my yard, or from my yard, I've seen deer, possums, squirrels, birds, dogs and cats, neighbors, woodchucks, skunks, chickens are on the east side of town, and turkeys. We also, I believe, have foxes and coyotes, so that the road, the animal, and he sometimes helps people get a bird that's stuck in their house or an animal that's stuck in their house, I understand it. So I think this is a very valuable position, and I'm sure that Chief Ryan is managing his hours and his deployment of his skills appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct Fifteen. I just have a question about the custodian position that's added to the police budget for this year. I was just wondering, seems like you would probably have someone filling that function in previous years, and I wanted to know what budget, I mean, what budget that activity's been taken out of and put in the police budget?
Chief, is this a new position, or is it swap?
Frederick Ryan, Chief, Public Services. Cleaning services only, and working with Mr. Chapdeline. Chapdeline, uh, the capital planning committee is investing in a multi-year, multi-phase renovation of the community safety building, and, and we, we take our responsibility to maintain, uh, the building, um, far more seriously than frankly we have in the past. So we intend to hire a building custodian to, it, it's the only building in town that I'm aware of that doesn't have a custodian, and we're open 24/7, so, yeah, we're adding that position. Thank you.
Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I was interested in the discussion about the animal, uh, animal control officer, in that it would be nice to have an additional, uh, part-time animal control officer, but in budgeting, we're looking to maintain a 3.5%. Moving down the line items to the parking control officers, three part-time, uh, there seems to be the usual plethora of illegally parked cars and white box trucks conveniently located near Corbata without tickets. I, I'm... It, it's on Google Maps, too. It's a constant. But the, the question is, is are we limiting the number of parking control officers under this 3.5% formula? Because it only seems that if you do the math, that apply parking control officers to illegally parked cars, you would generate more revenue than you're expending for the parking control officer.
Chief, have you done a study whether, on that issue? Or what's your opinion?
Further, Brian, Chief of Police, I, I don't eat chocolate croissants, so, uh, I haven't had that experience. We, we issue between 15,000 and 20,000, uh, parking tickets annually. And we have looked at, uh, the deployment of the, we have one full-time, I think it's 2.3 full-time equivalents, is it not?
The budget says three part-time, if, if my read of the budget is correct.
I think it's about two and a half FTEs. And we've looked at their deployment in, in the business areas of town, and, in my opinion, a fourth would be, we would be looking for work for them to do. They work daytime hours, one works on, on Saturdays. We try to juggle another one in, in afternoons. But clearly with the, uh, parking study, which I think has been funded, has it not?
Approved.
Approved. That's, we will look at that again in the future.
Uh, we're not, uh, holding that back on that 3.5% rule, are we?
The entire budget is built on, on, um, that policy of the Town Manager and Board of Selectmen, yes.
Uh, could I, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, inquire to the manager whether he's holding parking control agents who generate revenue to a 3.5% increase due to, uh, the 3.5 rule?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Every single town department, um, is, looked, eh, in total and held to the three and a half percent increase rule, so yes.
Uh, does that offset to the revenues those employees generate?
No, th- those revenues are treated as general fund receipts along with, uh, all other local receipts, uh, as, as revenue here and the three and a half percent, uh, growth in the budget is treated separately from revenues.
Well, we've got a boatload of illegally parked vehicles in this municipality, um, and, which would generate revenue for the town and to not do something about all these illegally parked vehicles and to not, uh, employ our sworn officers who have a higher function to do these parking functions, it would make sense to not apply this three and a half percent rule to the parking control officers and employ enough so that we can reduce the number of illegally parked vehicles. In case we haven't noticed, this has become quite a destination in the evening, and that's resulted in far worse parking problems after 5:00 PM than you generally find at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Mr. Trembley?
At Trembley, Precinct 19. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'm curious if, uh, when the town is doing a parking study, if they're also going to study the amount of, um, sales that might be lost at Burlington Mall if we start ticketing real hard, all, anybody who's, pops into a store for a few minutes?
Is that going to be part of your consideration, Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Certainly, eh, any and all impacts on business and, and residents will be taken into account when we, uh, study parking.
Anyone else wish to speak to community safety? Seeing none. We move on to inspeckional, inspections. Who put a hold on inspections? Mr. Loretty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, Precinct 7. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I have a question about the $40,000 budgeted in fiscal 2013 for SIMS inspections, and I'm wondering, is that amount expected in, to continue into 2014 as well?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Currently, right now, that, that would, that would be a one-time appropriation to cover the costs of, uh, inspecting the project going for, um, as it goes forward. Uh, we'll, we'll, we will keep an eye as the project moves forward, but I don't anticipate that we would be asking for that appropriation again next year.
Thank you. My other question, Mr. Moderator, is whether there was any special amount budgeted in the Inspeckional Services Department for the Brigham's development, which is roughly two-thirds the size of SIMS?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. My understanding is the, the Brigham's project was approximately one-third the size of the SIMS project, and the Inspeckional Service Division was able to handle that workload within the confines of its, uh, of its current appropriation, but with the increased scope of the SIMS project, uh, to be conservative and to be sure that we were covering all costs, we are requesting this, uh, the, the $40,000 amount you're referencing for the SIMS project.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I'm wondering if anyone remembers when the legacy apartment complex was, um, built, which is also roughly two-thirds the size of SIMS, whether any additional inspectors were hired?
Does anyone remember back that far? Mr. Burns?
That's on Mr. Burns. Wrong guy.
Inspeckial Services. Mr. Loretty, no, I do not remember additional inspectors at that time, but I don't believe we also even had the activity that we have presently, uh, in the department.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to inspections? Seeing none. Next one that held was Budget 20, Education. School Department is going to give us a report. Are you going to speak to it? Yeah, go ahead. Now's your chance. We have to take...
I'm doing the intro. Um, one year ago, Kiersey Allison-Ampy, Chair, School Committee. One year ago, Ms. Starks, then Chair of the School Committee, was up here speaking about the dire cuts that would occur unless there was increased funding for our schools. In June 2011, Arlington's residents chose to make a commitment to our town and to our schools and passed an override. This changed the picture so much for this past school year. We avoided cutting 60 more positions, mostly teachers. Our elementary students are in classes averaging 23 rather than 27. They have gym, art, and music every week. The cluster system was retained in the middle school. Size increases in both middle and high school classes were diminished. At the high school level, graduation requirements were kept at 2009's higher level, and popular electives and foreign languages were retained. Athletic fees were reduced. The FY13 budget that will be presented momentarily by Dr. Bodie and staff marks the second year and seventh in which we have been able to make staff additions instead of reductions. Although not yet near FY10 staffing levels, we are moving in a better direction. She will discuss how these additions impact our students. Arlington schools continue to offer above-average education for below aver, below state average spending. We're grateful for the override, which has granted us a period of fiscal stability. It also gives us time to address the knotty issues we see ahead: increasing enrollment, equity of resources, aging infrastructure, teacher and staff negot, contracts to negotiate. These are the issues that the School Committee and the schools are preparing to tackle in the coming year. And now, Dr. Bodie? Where'd you go? Oh, there she is. Thank you.
Captain Bodie, President of the School. Ms. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I'm very pleased to be here tonight to give you a brief report on the schools and the school budget for next year. Um, I plan to address briefly the following topics: demographics, academic highlights, athletic safety, budget overview, and special education. Since 2000, the annual enrollment growth in the public schools has averaged around three, one and three-quarters percent each year. Since 2005, we have enrolled an additional 400 students, which is equivalent to another elementary school, all amid many years of budget reductions. The question I think that many of you would ask, are we getting good educational value for the tax dollars invested in our schools? I would emphatically say yes, and looking at this through a couple of lenses, one being cost. The per pupil cost in Arlington is about $500 less than the average per pupil cost in the state of Massachusetts, while our students perform at very high levels. As many of you may know from last week, U.S. News and World Report ranks the high schools in the nation. Arlington High School was ranked among, was number 26 in the state. And for that ranking, received a gold designation from U.S. News and World Report for its high achievement. This places Arlington High School in the top 2% in the nation. As you can see in the budget book that was provided to you on the first day of Town Meeting, our students are accepted into very competitive colleges, and they continue to excel at very high levels with state MCAS tests and national exams. And a little-known fact is that the survival rate between classes is very high in Arlington, usually somewhere 98, 99%. Besides, eh, besides academics, success comes in many forms, um, in athletics, in the creative arts, and community service. Nearly 60% of our high school students participate in at least one sport, and three of our students this year were nationally ranked. In the creative arts, three of ours, our, our students received national awards and scholastic arts awards and, with getting gold and silver keys. Two of the four musical groups that were asked to perform at the State Music Conference, All-State Conference, after hundreds auditioned anonymously, were from Arlington. Our students give themselves continuously, whether they're in the elementary, they're raising money for Haiti or for food banks, or in the middle school, helping to change, to paint and upgrade tech rooms, high school juniors giving a day for community service. With respect to athletics, um, one issue that is before you at this Town Meeting is this, is safety. Arlington High School is focused on protecting our athletes, ranging in policies we implement to impact baseline testing to, to maintenance provided for all helmets. In addition, we have provided extra money in our budget this year for, um, for these purposes and for all safety, uh, equipment. And there's more information in the book that was provided to you. And for those of you that are watching at home, this budget book can be found on, on the Arlington Public Schools website in the Budget section. Moving on to our budget, the, the school budget is different than other town budgets because it is not fully funded by town appropriations. In fact, nearly $6 million of the $50 and a half million budget, um, comes from grants, fees, and other reimbursements. The graphic you see, we'll see, uh, shows you how the, what the funding source looks like as a, as a percent of whole. As Dr. Allison-Ampy said, the, we have been very fortunate to, that the voters in Arlington passed an override last June. The impact of that vote, which we remain very grateful for, is that this year we did not have to have any budget reductions, and the same will be true next, for next year. But the FY13 budget is also been formed in the context of all the years that we have had budget reductions, and there's been, there's been efforts in this budget to partially rebuild areas that have been hardest, hardest-hit, one of which is the administrative infrastructure of the school system. Another consideration has been the relocation of Thompson students, both in terms of staffing and space, as well as our continued investment in our special education programs, and then this also is a labor negotiation year. In this graphic, um, it demonstrates budget expenses by category. The one thing that I would call your attention to is the part of the pie that is for central office. In that particular budget is all of the, um, money set aside for negotiations as well as steps and lanes, and when, when negotiations conclude, that, that, those monies will be redistributed, uh, to other parts of the budget. Now I want to talk a little bit about some trends and costs in special education. As I know that all of you are aware, all public schools by law must provide a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment. Special education is more expensive than regular education because of lower student-teacher ratios and the other related services that are necessary for many students. In the Arlington Public Schools, 15% of our students receive special education services, 13% in, in district programs, and 2% in out-of-district programs, whereas the state average is at 17%. One of the notable trends in special education in the district has been that since 2005, the number of students receiving, receiving special education services has decreased by 9%, while enrollment has increased by 9%. And the question is, well, what, why is that the case? One of the main reasons that this is the case is our second-to-none reading, uh, response to intervention program. In this program, our students are monitored, our, all of our students in K5 are monitored, um, for, for reading level and provided with the extra services that they would need to become proficient readers. 88% of our students are at grade level by, in grade three, and 95 by grade five. Here is a graphic that gives you an illustration of the trends in regular, in special education. I call your attention to the yellow, which you can see at the top, shows a decrease in special edu, in out-of-district placement since 2005, and also the shrinking of, of the ra, of special education as a percent of total population. The teachers in our district work very hard to meet all the needs of our students, and I think that why, the reason why you're seeing this is, is resolved a compilation of many of the, of the interventions that we do in regular education. Yet, the cost of special education does grow at about 8% every year. This is better than it had been. We previously have been growing it about 10% every year. It costs between $22,000 to $32,000 more to educate a student out of district than in Without, if, if all of our students that were in our substantially separate programming were to be placed in out-of-district programs, it would cost the district $2.3 million more than it costs to educate them in district. It is also the right thing to educate our students as much as, as best as possible in, within our community. This is, this is preferable for the students as well as their families. In this next graphic, you can see, uh, how the out-of-district ratio looks to in-district for all of our, of our special education programs. It's basically a two-to-one ratio in terms of costs. By the way, a copy of this PowerPoint is at the back, because I know that I'm rushing through it a little bit. There are many metrics that demonstrate the success of our students in the Arlington Public Schools, and you can, here are a listing of a few more of them. And by the way, um, the Arlington team did win on Sunday night and is going, yes, and going to the finals on Sunday night, um, against Hamilton-Wenham. to the finals on Sunday night against Hamilton-Wenham. So the message I would like to leave with you this evening is this: As administrators, teachers, and staff in the Arlington Public Schools, I want to tell you how proud we are of what goes on in the classroom every single day, and how proud we are of the achievement of our students. And we will be available for questions.
Let's take our 10-minute break. We'll come back and start with questions. Ms. Weber, you have the floor. Please take your seats. Please come in and sit down. Yep, Ms. Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Janice Weber, Precinct 21. I would just like to ask a question of, I guess, the school committee, the school department, if they could just tell me in their budget where they have the apportionment for the census that the school department is supposed to give to the town clerk's office every year.
Ms. Johnson, can you tell us where that is?
Diane Johnson, Chief Financial Officer. Can you, I'm sorry, can you ask your question again?
Yes, I'd just like to know, I couldn't find in the budget where the apportionment that the school committee is supposed to give to the town clerk's, the registrar's office, actually, every year, and I couldn't find that in the budget.
I'm not sure I know what you're referring to.
Oh, well, you receive a gray bill every year as an apportionment. It's Massachusetts State Law, Chapter 51, Section 4, and usually it's, we've been charging $3,000 since 1994. Other towns charge a lot more, but it's for the upkeep of the census and the information we give the school committee on any children under 17. And you receive a gray bill every year for that, and I just don't know where it is in the budget.
It isn't in the budget.
Well, how do you pay it, then?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Leonard, Precinct 17. On page four of the Arlington School Committee report, in summarizing the FY13 budget, in the first paragraph, it makes mention of how things have worked out pretty good due to the town passing the override and due to the conversion of GIC. One thing I don't see, Mr. Moderator, and what I have in my hand right now, is a newspaper clipping from the December 22 Arlington Advocate of last year, which mentions at that particular time that the Massachusetts School Building Authority announced it'll make payments ahead of schedule to towns, up to six months ahead of schedule in some cases, to help communities cut short-term borrowing costs and improve their cash flow, courtesy of Treasurer Steve Grossman. It continues on by saying that the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority, will provide Arlington $1.15 million in advanced payment as part of its decision for early Now, again, looking at page four of that school committee report, my curiosity comes up, there's no mention of the $1.15 million that Arlington was to receive, and I'm just curious, has it been received? Is that money coming? Will it have any effects on the amount of money that they're asking for in their budget, et cetera, et cetera?
Mr. Tozty?
That money would not be in the school budget. The Mass School Building Authority reimburses the town for past projects over a period of years. Now, this is not the way it is currently done, but the way it was done for several of our schools. So this money goes directly to the town's general fund. It's calculated in the budget summary sheet in the Finance Committee report. So that money goes directly to the town to help compensate for the debt service that the town pays on its bond issue. So in effect, that's sort of part of the capital budget. It's not part of the operating budget of the schools. That would not be in there.
It is deceiving, as I say, I'm the only one probably that's got a hold of this article right now, because it goes on the state, it includes money to help pay for the bracket, the bishop, and the hottie. And I understand what you just said, but as I read this article, it still gives the impression that somehow the money is headed towards the schools. It doesn't give the impression that the town is free to put it in any particular kind of fund. So is the article, do you think, deceiving? Because it does spell out, I mean, I know you don't have a copy of the article, but it does spell out to help pay for the bracket, the bishop, and hottie schools, respectively.
Yeah, I, I...
Mr. Gilligan, did you receive that money yet to help pay off the bonds that are outstanding that Masbo is going to help us pay for?
But it's, yeah, it's not part of the school's operating budget. It is part of the general revenues of the town on there, and, you know, when that money comes in, that helps to pay for the debt service.
Mr. Gilligan?
Town Treasurer, yes, the town has been receiving accelerated payments on school building reimbursement money. The state treasurer, Mr. Grossman, is trying to accelerate those payments in order to close out certain projects, but we have been receiving the money. And that money is deposited in the general fund.
So as of right now, as you've already stated, the $1.15 million is not coming as fast as Mr. Grossman...
No, I didn't say that. I said, I said MSBA reimbursement payments are being made on an accelerated basis, which is exactly what the newspaper article you're quoting states.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Sir. Thank you, Mr. Gilligan. Thank you, Mr. Tozty. Mr. Harrington?
Stephen Harrington, Precinct 13. I'm going to talk about sort of a high-level stuff. I'm going to ask some questions, although I didn't intend to tonight, and I'm just going to point out a couple of things to you. If you look at your Green Book, and on page B11, which is the budget that we're currently on, number 20, the education budget, and you look in the box, you know, it shows fiscal year 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013, and I'm assuming... And I'm assuming this is the town appropriation. And you can see under fiscal year 2013, it's hard to read, $44 million and change. And under fiscal year 2011, I see a number that's, pardon me a second, it's $38,591, right? So remember that for a minute, $38,591. Mr. Good, would you please put up on the screen, if you have your other budget book from the school department, this one here? If you, there's a lot of great things about our kids in here, and I applaud you all for having such great children. But if you look at page 35 on the book... Good, could you put it up on the screen for me, please? Could you make it a little larger? It's going to be hard to read. Someone's as bad as a budget book. If you look at fiscal year 11 budget on page 35 of the book, you see that the fiscal year 11 budget from the town appropriation, it's the very first line on there, is $36,888. So in here it says the town appropriation for fiscal year 11 budget was $36,888 for fiscal year 11. If you look at this, you see that the fiscal year 11 budget is $38,591. So that's a lot of money. If you look further along the line in the school department handout, you can see the fiscal year 13 budget on the right-hand column, $44,642. And that matches exactly to the vote we're going to take. If you look at fiscal year 12, at $42,681, it matches exactly. But there's a couple million dollars missing in fiscal year 11's budget between this presentation and this presentation. Now, why do you care? Well, as you can see, maybe, it's hard to see up there, but between fiscal year 11 and fiscal year 13, the town appropriation on a budgeted basis went up 21 percent. So that's a lot. You'll see in this budget book, they, we heard from the superintendent of schools, that it went up 3.6 percent from fiscal year 12 to 13. But appropriation went up 21 percent on a budget-to-budget basis. And if you look down at the bottom, the fiscal year 11 budget of $44 million or so, there's actually, it was a good 8 percent increase from one year to the next. Last year, when you voted the budget for the school department, it wasn't that $48 million that you see there. It was significantly less, $5 million less. If you look on the next page, on page 37 of the school department handout, this is a cost center summary. Okay, so this is what they, and now they have fiscal year 11 expense. So just as a general point, a budget's a future-looking statement. It's a plan. Once a budget's happened, it doesn't make sense to talk about a budget anymore. You talk about what you spent. And so this is talking about what they spent. And if you go to the bottom of it, you'll see they said they spent $43,506. So that's about $1,000.3 less than what they budgeted because of the overrun in fiscal year 10. So there was a decrease of $1.3 million that this town meeting, or a special town meeting, decreased the school budget in fiscal year 11. So from an actual expense in fiscal year 11, on an appropriated basis, to the budget of fiscal year 13, this school department budget's going up 25 percent. That's a lot, and now every year it's compounding on it. This is going to be the next override. You've got a 25 percent base growth in a year, or two years, and every 3.5 percent on top of that is going to be compounded by that initial 25. I want to bring your attention back to page 35 for one more second. I promise I'll almost be done, because this is sort of hard to follow. If you look back at page 35, you can see that the budget's $44 million, the, I mean, $50 million for this year. The budget was $44 million back in fiscal year 11. You've got a bunch of columns in between. And we have like this thing saying a 1 percent mid-year increase, because that's what they gave for salary increase. But no way do you see where the other, well, it's actually a 12 percent increase from an actual basis to a budget basis in this year. Where'd all that money go? It's a rhetorical question. I'll draw your attention, one last point I'm going to make, and then I'll leave you. If you go back to page 37, so this is expenses, and you look at the cost centers, and you look at cost center, high school, athletics, and you see the fiscal year 11 expense, and you see the fiscal year 13 budget, and you take a percentage change over two years. Well, the bottom-line number, $43,505 to $50,000, is a 16 percent increase. So on average, 16 percent increase. If you sort these by percent change, athletics, number two, goes from $674,000 in fiscal year 11, actual expense, and that's what they spent. And you look at fiscal year 13 for budget, at $584, that's a 13 percent decrease. So you have a 16 percent increase in this cost center budget, on average. Some of these numbers are going up 40, 50 percent. And you see athletics down 13 percent. It's the second-largest decrease. So I just want you to keep that in mind later when we talk about how much money is being spent on athletics. This is their own numbers. It went down 13 percent. I would like to direct a question to the moderator now. I said I wasn't going to ask a question, but can someone explain to me how in the school department budget book, the fiscal year 11 appropriation is registered as $36,888,000, and in the budget that we're going to vote on, on page B11, Budget 20, it's $38,591? Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Johnson, can you explain the variation of those two numbers?
Diane Johnson, Chief Financial Officer. I believe the difference is the $38,591 in 2011 was the original town appropriation for, in the spring meeting, and the $36,888 was the reduced town appropriation subsequent in the fall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Chappert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roland Chappert, Precinct 12. Just a couple of comments and a question. First, I read the report from the school department a couple of days ago. I was impressed with some of the accomplishments that the kids have done in the past year, and right up until the other night when they had that high school quiz contest and did very well. I can attest to some of these successes, because my oldest grandson is out of UMass Amherst, and he's a Deanless student this year. So, you know, we're doing a pretty decent job. We really are. My question has to do with technology, which happens to be a buzzword that I'm always interested in. And I ask you to look on page 28 of the school department budget report. And there's a long series of paragraphs relative to Technology K to 12. And some of them I'm familiar with, and others I haven't had an opportunity to take advantage of. I am really interested in, and I probably should ask this question every year. And I will, in fact, ask through the moderator if the technology director, or chief officer, can give us a couple of minutes. Where are we going right now? You recall a few nights ago that I said at the vocational level, the need in this country is for technology, people, not necessarily college graduates, because that's where the jobs are. Now, at this level, the academic level, the same kind of argument can be made. What I want to know is, where do we look through next year and the year following that if we just consider the technological upgrades within the school department?
Mr. Good?
You asked the chief technology officer. He can tell you about the new machines and software, but if you're looking for a curriculum, I think you have to ask Dr. Bodie.
No, I want to know what is he using to, as an adjunct tools, if you will, in a given school?
Actually, I think that's more directed to Dr. Bodie. Dave can tell you about what machines she wants him to buy. Dr. Bodie?
I would have preferred to see the answer from Mr. Good. He's the one that's got his hands on it all the time.
I think it's more of a curriculum question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Good, Chief Technology Officer. The school's path for the next three to five years has been laid out in the strategic plan that is listed in the website for the schools. What that plan encompasses is sort of a three-fold, sort of melding-type effort. One is infrastructure, two is curriculum, and three is software applications. Currently, we're rebuilding the school's network and have a variety of different pilot programs that are running in various public or media center-type areas in the schools where we've installed wireless and are using portable equipment. The long-term goal, and we're not sure it's ours yet, but the academia is moving to sort of the one-to-one computing model. We're using sort of the pilot method with a variety of vendors and a variety of type tools to test this out, to see if it, in fact, is something that we can use in the district. The sort of increase in portable equipment, so study groups can be formed anywhere, and group learning, like group employment. Teams in industry are very popular. Groups are very popular. Sort of the ability to work together on common outcomes are done at the college level, and we would want our junior high and high school students prepared for that. Curriculum-wise, we're looking at tools that will enhance sort of CAD development, reading and writing. Special education is an area where we've gone to sort of a one-to-many model using projection and shared resources. We're also, I won't say dabbling, but we're invested in cloud computing. Currently, we are sort of a Google Apps environment. We do a lot of file sharing, mail, website development at the high school. Students and teachers have a same sort of email and work environment. And we'll probably expand that to the Odyssean School in the coming year. I think the thing that is key and the thing to remember is, as we invest, we need to do two things at the same time. We need to invest in rebuilding an aged infrastructure, as well as trying to get out onto the, I'm not going to say bleeding edge, but at least to the edge. Devices like this will be devices that students will use. At the opening of the school, we had a physics professor from Harvard do an opening discussion. And his claim to fame is that he has sort of reversed the classroom dynamic where homework is done in the classroom and classwork is done at home. And he's done this with technology and a web-based polling tool. And so he had us all connect and log in with our devices, and we connected to our sort of new wireless environment, and we answered a variety of polling questions. Some of us did better than others. But the dynamic that comes from that application, the faculty member can take a look at the results and sort of match participants or students into sort of secondary groups and say, here's a group of students that got these answers correct. We'll pair them with some that didn't. What is the dynamic if you compare or place all of the students who got it right? And what is the sort of advancement to the learning in each of those groups? So that's where sort of Ivy League schools and others are going. At the collegiate level, we're trying to build an infrastructure to prepare our students to get there, along with sort of a robust group of applications. And training of teachers and hiring of teachers with technical backgrounds has become key, because the world has gone in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Good. Mr. McCour- oh, go ahead, Mr. Chappert. I thought you were done.
Thank you. I'm encouraged. Really, I will ask this question every year, because I want to see what's happening here. This is where we need to be. If we're going to stay on that top 2 percent in the United States, we have to stay on top of this activity. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. McCoury? Mr. Schlickman, our newest school committee member?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9, through you, Mr. Moderator. If I might ask the CFO if she'd care to enlighten us on the change in the numbers in the athletic budget?
Do you have a specific kind of question for?
It was previously stated that we're cutting our athletic spending by a number. I'm just wondering if that is indeed the case, and to explain the numbers.
Diane Johnson, Chief Financial Officer. In FY11 was the first year when we started attempting to track athletics in a more detailed way. That was the first time we were gathering data on a sport-by-sport basis. And it was a new chart of accounts, it was a new way of handling the entire budget, and it was a new way of handling athletics. My long-term goal has been to develop three years of actuals data in every budget cycle. So you'll be able to look back over three years' worth of trending in actuals as we're developing the current year's budget and the future year's budget. But I only have one year of data so far. And so I think it's important to bear in mind in the FY11 expenses for athletics, that isn't a trend. That is a point in time, and I'm not, in fact, I know there's one overstatement in there in that the athletic director is not a 1.0 position, but I do know 1.0 of his salary ended up in that budget. So, you know, these are things that shake out over time, and FY11 was our first year running with this new model. $561,877 had been the amount that was budgeted for FY11. To what extent athletics went over budget, or, you know, we captured things in the athletic budget that didn't truly belong there, I didn't go back and parse that out. I'm hoping to show over time that we'll see the real trend of what athletics truly cost, sport by sport, and also in aggregate. So as you'll see, we've budgeted in FY12 and FY13, which is actually the same budget back to FY11, rather than actual. And we're moving forward, we've added the $22,000 this year to provide additional safety equipment or any other as needed for the athletic director in the pursuit of better safety for our students.
So basically, the change in numbers is an effort to go from a more, a less precise measure, trying to get it down to something where we have hard data that we can make informed decisions from?
Correct. And the budgets of FY, you know, of FY12 and '13, we're moving in that direction, but we're not there yet.
I know this is far more precise than in my previous run of the school committee, and I thank you for that work.
Thank you. Mr. Deist?
John Deist, Precinct 13. If you pay attention to how schools across the world are rated, you realize that kind of at the very top are places like the Netherlands and South Korea and some other wonderful school system. And at the very bottom are places like Uganda, where there's hardly any education at all. And somewhere in a range, maybe about that wide, are all the industrial nations. And the United States usually finds itself down here at the bottom And the United States usually finds itself down here at the bottom of that collection of advanced industrial nations. That's not true for Massachusetts. And in particular, it's not true for Arlington. Because if you place Massachusetts on this scale, it's right up there near the Netherlands and those places. And Arlington is among the best school systems in Massachusetts. So I think we can claim that this school system, which is relatively inexpensive, this school system is among the best in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deist. Ms. Lucian?
Kate Lucian, precinct 20. I have two children at the Dallin and a third who's very excited to get in there. We're receiving a wonderful education, and I'm really grateful for all the efforts and the funding that's made that possible. My question is, we walk to school whenever we can, and I've had the opportunity to notice that though Dallin is only six years old, is showing some visible signs of wear. And so I'm wondering what the process is for creating the facilities budget? Does someone review the building to preventive maintenance? And who oversees the implementation?
Ms. Johnson?
Diane Johnson, chief financial officer. It's a multifaceted process. There is maintenance staff and funding within the school operating budget. There's also the capital budget that does the long-term plans as we, you know, as we're working on the Thompson or when we did the major renovations to the Stratton recently. And recently, the capital committee has, and the town, have voted to form a long-term maintenance committee that will sort of do that intermediate, that intermediate space because there is a need for that kind of longer-term planning. You know, not a replacement, which is kind of the venue of the capital, more the capital committee, and not quite day-to-day operations, which is more the leaking faucet. But, you know, the big things in between.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, precinct 11. I'm sorry, I don't rise to end discussion at this moment. I just wanted to make a brief comment, though. And that is, I was going to get up here because a couple of years ago, people were grousing and complaining about the look and feel of the school department budget presentation. I just wanted to say thank you very much for putting together something that is interesting to read and, in my opinion, looks a lot better than it used to. So I noticed it, and I'm sure some of you noticed it. I didn't hear anybody say thank you for that. So when I was thinking I'd get up here to talk about that, it occurred to me that, as I understand it, we're about $100 million town in your tax dollars, and about 50% of that is going to the school. So it's a big item we discussed tonight. And I think we owe a great thank you to the voters, the people who paid the taxes for this department. But we also should recognize that several years ago, the situation in the school administration and the way the schools was going for the parents and the kids was much, much worse than it is today. I think we're looking at a situation that is just wonderful compared to how I remember it several years ago in my adult life, and it approximates those glory days of when I was a kid in this school system. So 50% of your dollar to Uncle Sam tax that you pay goes to war. I think it's great that 50% is going to an improving school system. I hope they'll continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jamison? Mr. Jones, Alan?
Alan Jones, precinct 14. And I apologize, Mr. Moderator, for this commercial announcement, but if you are concerned, as Mr. Harrington is, about the discrepancies between your green book and your beige book and the numbers that don't match where maybe you might think they should match, that you keep that in mind over the next few years when we consider consolidation of the town and school financial management departments.
Mr. Berkowitz? Maybe you can print the budgets bigger next year so we can read them.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Bill Berkowitz, precinct eight. I too appreciate the accomplishments of the schools. I would like to ask a question that I asked Dr. Bodie last year about grants, and I didn't understand the answer that I received then, so I'm going to ask it again. What I did understand then was that we have, the schools have, a part-time, one-part-time grant coordinator. That grant coordinator, perhaps with support, pulls in, I'm looking at page 11 of the school budget book, that grant coordinator pulls in over $2 million worth of grants per year. Also on that same page, page 11, that grant amount is down last year by, from last year by 9%. We understand, of course, that grants are hard to get. $2 million is, of course, a lot of money. It's about 4% of the school budget. And given that, the question I asked last year was, would it not make good sense and cost-effective sense to make that position, grant coordinator position, a full-time position? Meaning that an investment of about $30,000, $40,000 a year ballpark, would repay with added grants many times over? Even in a low-end scenario, as far as I see it? Dr. Bodie responded, as I heard it, as I heard it, and I'm paraphrasing, that that's not the direction we're going. If my reasoning is correct, then why would we not want to have a full-time grant coordinator for the school and increase our effort thereby getting more money for the schools? Thank you.
Dr. Bodie? Can you address the issue regarding the grant coordinator?
I can. Kathleen Bodie, superintendent of schools. We do have someone that is part-time in that role. However, she's full-time in the school district, a very able Julie Dunn. Many of the grants that you seek under the $2 million come from entitlement grants, which are federal grants, Title I, Title II. There's a number of grants and what they're specified for. We actively seek grants that basically supplement what we can offer in the schools. And the way of grant writing is that it has its ebbs and flows. And so while our grant writer is part-time for that part of the position, she is full-time taking other aspects of needs in the district. For example, cost containment, working on reducing transportation was a major project over the last couple of years. So we also have department chairs and principals who actively, along with sometimes their PTOs, that work in that role. But always they come to Ms. Dunn to help refine the grants before we send them out. But we've been, I would say, we've been very successful over the last few years, and it's due to a number of, a real team effort on the school department part.
Let me ask you more a specific question. Would it not be more cost-effective to hire a, to have that, to have a grant coordinator who was working, securing grants full-time?
I can't truly answer that question. I will tell you this. One of the things that we have found is that it's very difficult to write grants, and for Arlington to qualify for a number of grants. We don't let too many opportunities go by. But there are some grants that you have to go into partnerships with, which is exactly what happened in our Teaching American, our Teaching History grant. And you have to go in partnerships with a lot of school districts and higher education as well as districts that have higher needs. So there often involves a big team. It's not just one person that's going after these grants. You can't because they're too complex. And so we do, in fact, at one of the grants, we even hired an outside consultant to help us with it. So it really depends. We try to remain very flexible in approaching these. To your question, should we hire someone full-time? I think this has always been in the context of deciding with a limited budget where we're going to be able to put our dollars. And what we have historically done is try to keep as many of those dollars directly in the classroom.
Thank you. I think in this case, I do feel differently, but I do understand your answer, and I thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kathleen?
Thank you. Mark Kaplan, precinct seven. Wow, there's been a lot of information and answers to questions, and I'm not sure I always understood the answers. Okay, so athletics. I'm trying to understand, some items weren't, it wasn't sure if they were athletics or not, and how the classifications are changing. And, because, I don't know. In high school, I was a letter earner, I think, in either chess or math club. So I don't know if that would count as athletics because I got a letter or how it go.
Diane Johnson, chief financial officer. FY11, we changed our chart of accounts and how we keep track of expenses. And one of the things that seemed like a good area to track in more detail was athletics. And for the first time in FY11, we started tracking the athletics budget, as with many other budgets, in far more detail. For the first time, we started trying to capture expenses sport by sport. But this was new to the athletic director, to his secretary, to our purchasing department. It was, it's a big job to go from a more centralized budget to a more detailed budget. And I mean, as I cited one example specifically, and I know 100% of the athletic director's salary was put to athletics, but only .75 should have been. So 25% of his salary should have been journal entryed out of there and put to the high school budget, to the general high school budget, rather than to the athletics portion of the high school budget. This year, FY13, is the first year that we're making athletics its own cost center. Prior to this year, athletics has always been part of the high school budget. And because there is such interest in athletics, it seemed to make sense to pull it apart so that from now on, it'll be much easier to see athletics. It won't be sort of buried in the high school budget.
Okay. Another thing is, I noticed baseball helmets are the same cost as football helmets are about, they're $200, and it just seemed like a lot of money for a baseball helmet considering the higher risk of trauma in football.
I don't believe we buy a baseball helmet for every member of the team the way we would equip a football team.
Yeah, but they were like $200 bucks. It's like, wow. Different from last I knew. Okay, and soccer? Anything being done for head injury? Hearing all this stuff in the media about girls because they have weaker necks and they're far more susceptible to concussions, you know, if they hit the ground. And they're play hard.
I was a varsity athlete myself, and I walked away with a concussion and a fractured cheekbone playing soccer. So yes, I can, I can give personal experience to that. We are doing baseline testing on all athletes. So all of our athletes, not just, not just football, but all of our athletes will go through a testing protocol that will allow us to record their cognitive function using a computer program so that if they're injured, then the doctors have something to baseline against to see if there's been a change, which is a very powerful diagnostic tool in diagnosing a concussion.
Well, my question was prevention rather than after-the-fact diagnosis. Sort of help prevent the injuries in the first place from soccer or, I don't know, lacrosse, which I guess parents have to buy their own helmets?
Lacrosse and hockey are club sports, and the students who play them typically play them in more seasons than just the ones at the high school. And so they'd own their own equipment because they're playing in other seasons. Football is, kind of stands alone in that it's the only sport that's pretty much solely played by the time you reach high school age, only in the high school in the fall season.
Okay. Early childhood education. I noticed that went up a lot. You, I don't know, you buying a lot of diapers or, I don't know what the costs are from or, you know, is it, children are playing less sports and going to other sports? I don't know.
Again, I would, I would speak to the fact that FY11 was the first year in the chart of accounts, and we may be classifying expenses differently. I do know that the early childhood program has grown a great deal and that they've required more additional service providers, speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy.
Oh, okay. I thought that was child-rearing education.
No, it's our program for special needs preschoolers and for regular ed preschoolers.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, boy. Oh, yes. So the iPads, I was a little distressed about that, and maybe David Good can answer, or you could. But I've been hearing great things about how they're very beneficial to some special needs children, particularly those with autism, and they need alternative interaction methods. And so the touch-sensitive screen can be very beneficial. And there's some software out there that has been shown very beneficial. But in the program description, it looks like the teachers are getting them and not the kids, and there's no description of the actual software applications which provide the functionality as opposed to the device.
Well, I can say that in FY12, we received two unexpected grants from the Department of Education for our special education department. And I believe both, but definitely the $93,000 one, was used to pilot iPads to special needs students, particularly in our SLCA, which is our Autism Spectrum Program. And so that was actually grant-funded. It didn't come out of our appropriation budget.
Okay. Well, maybe you can, well, or David can say, what sort of advances you're making at the school in helping out special ed kids with these type of devices? Particularly Autism Spectrum.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Good, chief technology officer. The pilot program that we're running now with Apple and the special education department is sort of a fact gathering and a measurement-type pilot. And one of the things that we have asked teachers to do to sort of qualify for this program is to sample, test, experiment with a variety of apps. We furnished the teaching group with a access to a variety of applications. Teachers went off and acquired apps, used them in their classroom, and then came back two different times during the year to discuss the most popular, the most effective, and the ones that they would actually pay cold, hard cash for to institute into the curriculum.
Do you have any good news for us? Any early results?
No, not as of yet. Other than, you did mention the autistic children who do seem to respond favorably. The actual measurement capability, we've sort of just put into place so we can get some statistical data as to how responses are prior to the use of the equipment and then after the use.
Okay, thank you. One last question, I remembered. Any look at reducing athletic fees for the parents out there?
I think that's a question better directed to the school committee.
Okay.
Kirsty Allison, AMPE school committee chair and last-year chair of budget. We actually, we do not anticipate at this point reducing the amounts of school, of fees paid by the parents, but because a number, a greater number of parents are applying for and receiving financial help with the fees, the amount that has been collected has been less than was projected when the fee structure was originally set up two years ago. And to maintain that continued level of fee structure, we have reduced the fee expectation of, the fee revenue expectation in the FY13 budget from $290 to $260. So what we've done is, instead of boosting the fees, so we make the, what we expected, the revenue which we had been expecting after the override came in, we reduced the fee expectation and made up the amounts in other ways.
Are you saying participation has gone down?
I'm not, we haven't had a detailed discussion. No, Ms. Johnson is saying it's not because... I'm not, we haven't had a detailed discussion, no, Ms. Johnson is saying it's not because participation has gone down, it's because over time, more families have, have applied for and received the family cap, and so they aren't paying as much, as many fees. So we're, so the revenue in the, of the athletic fees collected has been, has decreased.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mustafa Varglu, Precinct 10. So I think we've heard some great things about how the kids are doing, especially at the high school level, a lot of awards, getting into the universities they want. My understanding is that that pipeline was fed by a lot of children earlier on, being able to participate in activities such as the ACE program, which was discontinued several years ago. And I'm wondering, and I can't see it here, has that pipeline been reestablished, or is there a similar pipeline in the early elementary years? And in this new budgeting, where we're refilling the admin positions and so on, are we contributing dollars towards that area?
Kathleen Bodie, Superintendent. We did have to reduce the, eliminate the ACE program a couple of years ago, but in that year of transition, one of the things that we did was buy a number of materials, do a lot of training for teachers to bring a number of the programs back into the, into classrooms, so there wouldn't be a pull-up program. So we don't have a pull-up program in the elementary, but that doesn't mean that we're not doing challenging problems. In fact, there are materials that have been given to the teachers and have, the teachers have been provided with some experience with, with some professional development around the materials. The ACE program still exists in the middle school, and you're absolutely correct. All, as I've said to the, the teachers in the district and staff, these successes at the high school are the result of many years of being prepared for, for the achievement that our students are experiencing. When we, when we have the pride of these awards, it is a district pride, it is not just the high school pride.
If I might follow up, and actually, you know, I'm, I'm very pleased with my student, or my daughter's, learning environment. I think the, the teacher she has one-on-one, or as her primary, you know, teacher is excellent, have been for all these years. But I am curious if there are some metrics that indicate that a teacher working with, say, 20 children or 24, 25 children of various levels are going to benefit as much from the newer method as from the older methods, or if the newer methods are better. I'm just curious what the metrics might be to support this, this change.
Well, it would be hard to isolate the specific metrics around the ACE materials per se, but I would say this, since the time that we have not had the ACE program, we still see continuous improvement, as one of our metrics is MCAS scores, whether they be in reading, math, ELA, writing. So if that was the, the only source of preparing our students for continued improvement, then you would expect to see those metrics either leveling off or, or going down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to the education budget? Seeing none, we're gonna move on. Next was libraries. Who wanted to speak to libraries? Mr. Jamison did.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. Rich Carr, no longer a member, but the past couple of years, I've asked a question about accreditation. Are we, are, will we be accredited this year, and will we not have to have a waiver? Because for those of you unfamiliar, the amount of funding and the increase from year to year depends upon whether we can have accreditation from the state.
New library guy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ryan Livergood, Library Director. I'm happy to report that we will not have to apply for a waiver. We are gonna continue our accreditation to the state.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Livergood. Anyone else wish to speak to libraries? Seeing none, the next budget was hold was Health and Human Services. Who wanted to talk about that? Anybody? Okay. We're gonna move on. Insurances, someone wanted to speak to insurance, Mr. Chaput.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Roland Chaput, Precinct 12. On the, on the insurance budget, I just have a question on expenses. There's an item called federal Medicare withholding. I'm sorry, my mistake. Federal flexible benefit plan, da-da-da-da-da. There's a big bump, $50,000. There's gotta be some kind of an explanation for how that went up so dramatically.
Mr. Chaput Lane's gonna tell us.
Adam Chaput Lane, Town Manager. Historically, that line has funded the flexible spending account for employees whereby they put away money pre-tax to be able to pay for medical-related expenses. However, with the move to the GIC, the town agreed to, town was allowed to and agreed to put together a health reimbursement arrangement, and that's the HRA acronym you see in the FinCom report, and to establish and manage through a third party the health reimbursement arrangement, there's a per subscriber fee, and that $50,000 is the payment for that per subscriber fee to administer the HRA.
And will we see the same thing, Adrian, you know?
Correct. As, as long as the town has an HRA for employees, there will be that subscriber cost.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to insurance? Yep.
Hi, Linda Hanson, Precinct 7. My question on the insurance goes to the Healthcare, Healthcare Trust Fund, and I'm just wondering if, if that's somewhere else in the budget that I didn't, that I haven't seen that's possible? But my question is around the current estimate of the balance from the previous self-funded insurance program that the town had, and just kind of thinking about, now that we're in the GIC, when will kind of get to the point where we've paid out all of the things that we need to pay out of there? And request that this number be included maybe somewhere in next year's FY14. On this page would make sense to me, but if there's another, a better place for it, that's fine too.
Mr. Chaput Lane, can you answer the lady's question?
Adam Chaput Lane, Town Manager. The current balance is still fluctuating based on claim, runout of claims from the prior plans, the Blue Cross plans. However, the, the most recent balance I've seen was approximately $3 million. That's, it's not appropriated because that trust fund, it contains funds previously appropriated and moved into the trust fund to be able to pay healthcare claims. And legally, those funds can only be spent to pay costs related to health insurance claims. However, I'd be glad to both share that number with you more accurately, as well as include that number in future year finance committee reports to see what the amount of those funds are and what the town's plans are to utilize those funds in the future.
That sounds good, thank you.
Anyone else on insurances? Seeing none, we'll move on to water and sewer. Who wish to speak to water and sewer? Mr. Jamison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. Just a couple items. Now, remember back, I talked about the revolving funds. In the revolving funds, we get a beginning budget, we get revenues, we get expenditures, and we get an annual budget. It would certainly be nice if the enterprise funds were presented in a similar fashion so we could get the balance sheet aspect of it beyond just the appropriations. I look forward to that in the future. I have a question about the interest income in miscellaneous. I haven't noticed this in the past, but it's a lot of interest. Does this mean that the water and sewer has a large fund balance that earning all this money for us?
Mr. Tost, do you know, who has that?
Mr. Gilligan, perhaps?
No. Mr. Chaput Lane, do you know where all that interest is coming from?
Interest in miscellaneous, $113,413.
Adam Chaput Lane, Town Manager. My understanding, Gordon, is that that's not interest earned on reserves, but rather interest charged on, on late paid bills.
Okay, so that's why the water and sewer gets it versus the collector and the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. You might want to stay up, Adam. I know, we just discussed the insurance budget, which, which had unemployment compensation and workers' compensation in it, but I find that again here in the water and sewer budget, I'm surprised we don't have consolidated that. Is there a reason why they're not consolidated on the insurance budget? And if, if there is a reason, then why they're not offset against the insurance budget?
Should there be, excuse me, Adam Chaput Lane, Town Manager, should there be workman's comp or unemployment compensation related to water sewer? Those accounts would be charged as opposed to the general fund budget, but since the general offsets, as you see in the budget, are related to actual health insurance enrollments that we, that we are certain of, that's why they're, they're carried as offsets. However, here, these costs aren't certain but need to be budgeted for, given that they could occur, they are, they're contained in the water sewer enterprise budget.
One more, and then I'm done. We also pay, although I position it farther down in the budget presentation under 24 for Medicare, which as I understand is a payroll tax, actually not an insurance, but that's where it is. Is there any thought about itemizing that in the water and sewer and offsetting that payroll cost against the insurance budget?
I guess I could say I would be willing to take a look at that and give it consideration of whether or not that would be appropriate to, to show an offset from the water sewer fund for that.
Yeah, so, so as background, over the years, as some of these, these items get bigger in the, as you note, the, as if people can note in the audience, on the previous budget, the Medicare number has grown substantially. I'm always interested in having the enterprise funds, which are supposed to be small, self-sustaining businesses, pay the full cost and not be, not be subsidized by general funds, and that's the reason for the questions. Thank you very much, Adam. You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tostie.
One thing I just wanted to let you know, one of the recommendations in the Department of Revenue study dealt with the whole water and sewer offset program. They didn't like the way we did it. We, we had one meeting, which we decided that, that probably the way we do it is how we want to do it, but yet, on the other hand, we need to be a bit more transparent. So one of the things, two of the things we're planning to do for next year is to have a separate page with all the offsets, so people can see, you know, how much money is coming in, how much money, or how much money is here, how much money is distributed to all the other departments, so you don't have to go through each budget and sort of add it together. We're also considering adding the balance sheet, balance at the, on the bottom of each of these enterprise funds. So, thank you.
Ms. Broadman.
Janice Bro, oops, Janice Broadman, Precinct 15. I'm just curious about the maintenance of storm sewer system. It seems as though, oops, seems as though it goes up significantly every year, and for 2013, it's $100,000 increase, 131%. Is there some structural reason why that's happening? Anything we can do about it to reduce those costs?
Mike Radamacher, Public Works Director. The reason for the increase is the EPA will be enacting a new stormwater permit, which will require more significant testing of stormwater discharge to riverine streams, as well as other periodic maintenance requirements, and that increase is in response to those new regulations.
Do they, do they offer any kind of support to towns to do that?
None really to speak of, no.
Anything else on water and sewer? Seeing none, we're gonna move on. Next one we have is, comma B, yeah, Youth Services Division. Who wanted to talk about that? Mr. Dice.
John Dice, Precinct 13, a member of the Finance Committee. I'd just like to call your attention on page B18, the, the budget for the Youth Services Division. Under the revenues, kindly notice that in 2010, $5,000, $4,000, 2011, $287,423, then 12, and $295,000 in 2013. School contracts, $35,000 in 2013, and then further down, under the general fund subsidy, which is money that the town supplies, that is to say, from, from tax money to the Youth Services Division, $293,000 in 2010, down to $120,000 this year. And then finally, maybe about six or seven from the bottom, fee for service clinicians, zero, zero, $171,000, and $204,000. This is a major success story, in my opinion, and I would like, if I could, Mr. Moderator, for the Director of, of Health and Human Services to come up and talk a little bit about how that happened.
Christine Connolly, Director of Health and Human Services. As many of you may have remembered, a couple of years ago, I came to you and told you about a plan we were putting in place after a, a cut to our department. We received about a $200,000 cut that prompted us to look at the way services were provided. As you may remember, the Youth Counseling Center provides direct mental health counseling to youth and families here in Arlington. At that time, what we did was we revamped the agency. We went from a staff-based counseling model to a FIFA service model. We then began signing contracts with all the major health insurance companies in order to be able to bill, and that's where you see the income coming in. We then were able to hire FIFA service clinicians, and today we have, I believe, over 13 clinicians that we can flex to as many hours as we want per week that they're willing to work, based on the number of clients that we bring in. So we're able to keep this very small or grow this very large, depending on the need. And let me tell you, the need is great. Here in Arlington, we're serving over 200 clients at any given time. We have about 12 on our waitlist currently. The Director is constantly trying to bring in more clinicians in order to address that need. At the Counseling Center, clinicians provide counseling for issues ranging from substance abuse, so youth substance abuse, adult substance abuse related to families, abuse, neglect, behavioral, behavioral problems. And if any of you know youth and families that are in need of counseling services, you know that child counseling in Massachusetts is, is really lacking. And so we're really lucky here in Arlington to have this opportunity to have the Youth Counseling Center and a sustainable model that is supported both by the community as well as donors in the community. So thank you for your continued support. The $120,000 subsidy is incredibly important. Many agencies that are private that don't receive town funding tend to close down, so I, I have to say that the department, the staff that work there are truly appreciative, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peluso.
I'm very interested in process. That's what I enjoy being here for. When this new group gets together and decide how we're gonna do this consolidation and everything, you know, to make it go much smoother, I'd like to make a suggestion. Try to figure out a way to deal with this whole budget area in a different way. I don't know if anybody else feel this way, but I feel like I've been waterboarded. I don't know, maybe, maybe it's just me, but it seems to me there's gotta be a better way to have exposure to the budget numbers. Maybe it has to do with, with the way questions are asked and responded to, maybe they have to be presubmitted and discussions, but I see a lot- But I see a lot of tired looking people in this room, and it's not only because I'm, you know, close to 80, but I think there's some others who are tired too.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the Youth Services Division? Okay, that will close our debate on the budgets. Oh, sir, what do you want? Mr. Haner.
Bill Haner, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, would you please ask somebody from the town to respond to the first speaker's statements regarding Chapter 90? And the, I was a bit confused, the idea that we're paying, that roads are being paid for, we have an increase in chapter money in 90. I got confused, and I didn't, there wasn't a question presented by the very first speaker on the budget. So I'd like to ask that.
Mr. Chaput, Lane, can you answer his question? Then we're gonna vote on the budgets.
Adam Chaput, Lane Town Manager. Mr. Haner, Chapter 90 funds are allocated by the state each year to every municipality, and those funds are spent without further appropriation by the town. What the previous speaker had pointed out was that in the capital plan, there was a figure of $500,000 reported for Chapter 90, and that's been a figure that historically Arlington has been allocated by the state. However, each year that allocation is based on funding made available by the state. In fiscal year 12, that allocation was increased, as the previous speaker mentioned, and going forward in FY13, we have projections that the, those funds will also remain to be increased as they were in FY12. However, from a year-to-year basis, it is subject to legislative approval and legislative funding. And right now, the legislature is taking Chapter 90 funding year by year. The Mass Municipal Association has been pushing for a multi-year Chapter 90 bill so that local governments can plan forward for their road paving projects. However, right now, a Legislative Conference Committee is looking at a one-year Chapter 90 bill that will give us certainty for 13, but not beyond.
We have before us a recommended vote of the Arlington Finance Committee on the budgets as printed in their book. All in favor of those budgets, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's a unanimous vote for the budgets, and I so declare. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Any motions for reconsideration? Mr. Tosty?
Forty.
Forty. Any other motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Harrington.
Forty.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
All opposed? Under number 40, Ms. Fiori, number 40, under water and sewer. We are adjourned, we'll see you Wednesday. We still have a bunch to get through, but if we're diligent, we might be able to do it Wednesday night.